Year, which you have three more months left. You're gonna be about twenty-five thousand dollars underfunding it again. So my recommendation is that when we figure out what your premium equivalents are, your budget about twenty-five thousand dollars more, plus six thousand four hundred dollars more for the dental. Okay, you budget thirty-two thousand dollars more. You leave the contribution amounts the same for both medical and dental for the members. And the county either budgets thirty-two thousand dollars more, or it's gonna pull thirty-two thousand dollars more out of the reserve. Make sense? That's my recommendation. Yes. And we can give you the spreadsheet to show you that in a very simple way. Yes. So we'll be able to come up with a budget, budget amount. With the contribution amounts showing either you leave the contribution amounts at the same percentage, or you leave the, or you eat the rest of those contributions up by the county within that budget.
But we still need to talk about vision aid and all that too.
Yes, so the vision, again, vision is voluntary. So continue on with the vision. On page twelve, you got a vision reduction of four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. So in actuality, their rates are going down for voluntary vision and a two-year rate hold. And that's in the gray bar on page twelve. Employer paid basic life is a rate hold through 2024. Had an annual cost of, what? A little over five thousand dollars per year. Employer paid on short-term disability. The life. So the rate, we'll get to that rate, but the rate is not gonna be. And the rates will be the same, the dollar amounts will change. So yes, we'll get you that within a day or so.
Really, that's what it costs to bury anybody nowadays, one-five thousand dollars.
Well, depends on how, how all out you go. Having just done this, yeah, it's probably half of that with, with the normal, maybe, maybe half of that.
But if that family member that dies is the sole income, and they're not even helping, they're not an adult. They might get six thousand dollars or less.
We've talked buy up, we've talked voluntary life insurance too. Like most of our counties, you have your employer pay, and then they can buy up to.
Right, I do that.
So we can add that too, if you wanna add that.
All right, where we going, guys? So what do you wanna do on the rest?
I don't know.
You know, we say, well, we're gonna tell them.
Six thousand dollars extra a year up on the dental.
And then do a little bit now with the vision. Carol just went down there.
I think if you guys just decide the plans we're coming to deal with and keep the schedule, whether to do the demo and the vision. She could probably prepare something for us, tell us how many we have on each plan. Because we did increase our insurance. Employees that have our insurance for, especially with the children. We helped them last year. I would say it doubled.
It was six and quite a few people.
And to end, people that take the accident.
I wanna help with the dental, also I wanna help more with accidental death. I'd like to maybe double that. With the accidental death, you know, make it forty thousand, forty thousand. Anyway, the family's got something to go on right after the tragedy or whatever it was. I mean, it'd be hard to go back.
I agree with you.
So that's something we'll talk about at a later date.
Well, we already confirmed what we're gonna do.
You don't have to vote on that today. So we can get you, with this carrier, we can give you. We, we can get you rates for twenty, twenty-five thousand, thirty, I'd give twenty-five thousand or forty thousand of the kids. So we, that, we can have that to you shortly. It's the only thing, it's, it's employer paid, so the only thing that's really gonna affect is the budget, right? How much is that or whatever? You can figure out how much you wanna do, that's easy.
Okay, so what else do we have to decide right now?
Nothing. Rest of it, rest of it, we gotta wait for numbers?
Nothing. So what we will get you, life insurance rates. If I remember. You wanna look at voluntary rates, you can offer it alongside of this, where they can buy up if they want to.
And if we can increase ours, and they can buy extra. I don't know if we got the option for them to do that now or not, I don't know if they do that, if they have black or not.
People probably.
We give you four options.
Okay. So I'll, we'll get you that, and then we will get you for your budget process, right? Premium or premium equivalent options, but we'll narrow it down to what we think it should be. So what your premiums will be for medical that include. Yeah, your premiums and then your contribution amounts, that will include not contributing to dental, or keeping the dental rates the same for the members. Does that make sense? So we'll give you a couple options there, keep it simple. Here's what your budget should be. And here's what your contribution strategy, strategy would be if they're paying for all of dental, or you're paying for some of dental and their rates stay the same. Does that make sense? With no or a little increase, I would leave their rates the same. I, with very little increase to both of these things, dental and, and medical. I would leave their contributions the same if you're, instead of raising them a little bit, right? Keep them the same in the county, it's just a little bit more of it. You, you've come in really at about eight, even though your, your rates are like nine-hundred and eighty thousand dollars, whatever it is, you've come in at the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar rates. Pretty great level here. You've been under that, so you've been under what our projections are, you've been under what the insurance, reinsurance, reinsurance can say that your rates should be. So you've come in, come in under that for a while here. So I think you're, you're in pretty good shape to leave the employees the same. You eat just a little bit more of it, budget for it, right? And then maybe contribute to their dental, to keep their dental rates the same.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will give you contracts for the reinsurance. Can you sign them or not? We will get those to you, and probably the new organ transplant contract.
So can we have something that will just sign it? Like a commitment condition to sign it?
I'll make a motion to bill, remind us, for the one we just voted on to sign without altering the other?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Well, maybe that motion needs to be any of us, we're sure not.
I'd pick any of us, yeah. Read, read, make, make your.
I'm gonna rescind my other motion, make it any one of us available to sign.
Now. All votes, vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And now we're ready for Highway Superintendent Scott. Scott, you darn well there not be as complicated as what it is.
I hope not.
I don't know, it'll be pretty complicated.
Yeah, sometimes. Okay, um, I was gonna, like, to cover bridges, I'd like to put a five-mile an hour, clean in the sign. Across the bridge.
When those bridges were built, eighteen-seventy-two, they had a sign on it that said, "Cross this bridge at a walk."
Which is. Cause I've heard, you know, the people, we're, he drives pretty fast to them. So, I mean, they thought it wasn't a, but this is. Yeah, that would've been posted, maybe, maybe it weren't, listen to that.
Post the sign five mile an hour.
I've kept the ordinance, taking the ordinance.
So you will be drawing it out?
I mean, yeah. I mean, it won't be enforceable legally, you have the ordinance.
But you can put the signs up.
We're not going across the bridge.
It's information right now.
One of them's closed until the circus is done, so it'll be October or December.
Yeah, that's Adams Mill Bridge, it's closed.
So Lancaster reopened?
It's partially open.
We had a big Mac tool trip, removed the signs and drive over out of the bridge this week. And I've been trying to find out who that dealer is. Gonna be a dealer comes to your place.
They don't do that.
Was it Mac or Maco?
I think it was Mac.
I think it was Mac, sure, that's what I heard.
I've been looking online, I've called a few people, ain't got no responses, I can let them know.
What I heard is that truck was so big, it almost couldn't fit into the heights required.
They're big trucks.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's height signs, weight limit signs, all, all done.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't doubt that truck weighed, uh. But I was gonna say twelve tons, yeah. The old bridge took it.
But if there's a Mac guy that comes across, he came across my place, I'm gonna try to get his thing.
Yeah, I would appreciate it if you do that, I thought that was pretty ridiculous, like, I would, I reported. I think we all had conversations with, you know, I had a conversation with the sheriff over this whole situation and concerns about it. And, uh, we had hoped that we could keep the bridge, like Adams Mill Bridge, open for car traffic. Because of the community, and so for me myself, it's about three miles farther to come to Delphi, uh, which isn't too bad. But to go to Delphi, or to go to Flora, I'm up to five or six miles farther than what it normally is to get around. But it didn't work out, because we had too many people, like this Mac tool truck, that didn't. The highway department put up a barrier, screwed it down to the bridge floor, and within an hour, somebody took a saw and cut it off. So they could get through there. It, it's, it's a sad, I don't think most of those are Carroll County people. I think they're people coming down seventy-five and going around. They don't have an emotional attachment to that bridge or anything like most of us do. But I had lots of neighbors and people that were down there and really calling me and saying, "We'd rather you close it." And endure, I mean, people who are gonna pay this extra price to drive than to lose our bridge. We do not want to lose our Adams Mill Bridge. And so you talked earlier, I know I did, Scott originally said, "Let's put a truck across it and block it off." And then Scott's a guest, and said, "Wait a minute, if they're vandalizing otherwise."
Yeah, they're a terrible, terrible.
Yeah, what happens if they start breaking the windshield or windows or anything on that truck? So we decided it's pretty hard to damage a pile of stone. So he had his crews come out, put piles of stone on it like you and I had years ago, put out there. And it's worked, I, I've been down there watching, I haven't even seen any tracks of a motorcycle going over it, so. It's shut off. Now Lancaster Bridge, you say you can still cross it right now?
Yeah, it's still partially.
Go around the barrier and cross it?
We haven't had, uh, the guy that wants to use it for, um, like, four rows and stuff, but. The other people, when they hit it a year while back, and that's when they closed it down, for to signal car traffic. Those people called in and said, "Hey, they, come down, move your signs," stuff like that, and we haven't had any of those calls, so. So as far as I know, I think that, that one's working.
Well, originally, I thought we were putting the sign, the barricades too far apart. What, way? But now I know that as you move them closer together, they just move them and throw them another way anyway, so that, that is not a. It doesn't, doesn't do much. I can't imagine being a truck driver coming down through there and throwing those barricades aside and drawing, going across a three-ton bridge with fifteen tons. What a liability that is to them. Now, I have asked your sign man who was out there, that that one sign that's on each side of Adams Mill Bridge, and I think it's at Lancaster Bridge also, that says, "Five-hundred-dollar fine for semi crossing." Throw that thing away. Because they say five hundred bucks, if I get caught, I'm not likely to get caught, so I'll just go on across for five hundred bucks. That's not the limits of their liability, only if they've damaged the bridge, they're liable for it, falls in, they're gonna be paying a million bucks for it. Or more, or more. Yeah? So, uh, I, I, let's get rid of that sign.
I made you a phone call about states closing all these roads and blaming us, I'm like, we have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, that's the state doing that.
Yeah. Then with the semis going down our roads constantly, I think we put a stop to that, somebody gave us a call down there on seventy-five. We put those semis, right, we put those signs up?
And their trucks, yeah.
I mean, they can go around.
I've been very pleased with the response of the highway department, and with the help of the sheriff department and all the cooperation that we've had on trying to fix this problem.
I wonder if it'd be worth it to get trail pants, so, down there.
Well, we have a, we have a problem at Adams Mill Bridge of, right now, people riding on it. I think, and. Yeah, paint, spray paint. And I have had a group, my son's part of a group that wants to, here, I agree, take over and come out and repaint it for us. And so we'll keep, they're Cutler people, they say, "We will, we'll keep it painted here if we allow them to." Now, is there, we could do that, couldn't we?
Yeah, should, should have to sign a liability release.
And can you draw that up?
Do those bridges ever get fire retardment treatment? I, I, not that I know of, that's still my own.
That was through Mark, Mark, our historian, yeah. Cause we voted on that.
I can, I can talk to him. And then fire, fire retardant, retardant, just keep people from trying to catch some fire.
We, I remember. I remember one time when we had a party out of Kokomo High School kids, who thought this was the end of the world, you know, there were, nobody's gonna be. And they actually started a fire right in there inside the bridge, and were standing around watching it. And it burned through the asphalt, this is before we put the new floor on. We were that close to losing that bridge right there. Okay, so did we ever vote on the five-mile an hour?
No, I asked the question.
Okay. You second, okay, so I got a motion and a second for five-mile an hour, uh, at both bridges. How far back do you post that from the bridge?
I was just gonna post to half the bridge, and when they come up there, get it slowed down to five, and go across it.
At least make a look at it, at the bridge.
All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, that motion passed. Now, your next one is?
And does that have to be advertised?
No. They're mending the existing traffic ordinance.
I also have, the bids we approved last time, also have papers to sign.
Wait, wait, all papers to?
Those bids we approved last week, or last time. I have ones for the.
The ones that Bill's gotta sign?
Yeah.
And it says on here. Thanks, what are you doing?
Yeah.
Okay. The issue is the back pay has been worked on?
Yep.
And you guys are working together on that, to get that settled?
Yes. I talked to Kent Irwin's office, and, um, he can go back to the day he started, which is, uh, our became superintendent, which is April the third, and we have, well. Working on that, but he said, he can't just submit this work, I mean, his employee record. He has to look at that and make sure that there is actually overtime earned, and so that's gonna have to be corrected, and you will help him with that if you'd like for us to. But really, it's a payroll and highway discussion. And he also said that that is a pay, pay correction, not a, um. Back pay, it's not back pay, it is a payroll correction from April third on. And he said it could be used by quetz time. He also said in the job descriptions, um, the only one that should be doing the, uh, work assignments is the highway superintendent. I, he's just pointing that out. He also pointed out that the gatekeeper, um, should be one too. I don't know why he did that, so. Utilize the quetz time.
I know that, um, we were just, the way it's been done since, or, since it started with the foreman. The foreman did all that, and that's, I mean, we just continue to do the way it was made done.
Back when Paul was there, would it have been the same way?
Yep.
Don't think Paul started it.
Because, um, Bob, Bob was doing it then.
I don't think there was a superintendent involved, so a superintendent's job descriptions, it, is what they're telling you will be. Specifically, it's one that they should be doing daily, that's why I'm kinda, I'm just kinda.
So are we all set, we need a motion?
We just gotta let them figure it out, will they get them back and do, do the other time?
I know he said that there was a, remember when he first got started as, as, as a foreman, that he didn't get foreman pay, he, he was doing the government pay. And he was wanting to do it, so, ever since he started becoming.
This is their recommendation, and that's what's going on, we go by, so.
I think he deserves it, he was doing the work. But it's go between HR, you and him. You get it figured out, and if you can't get it figured out, then you bring it back to us, then we probably have to.
This is the first time I've heard anything about being a foreman, while my people are being paid.
Yeah, I never heard that.
Anytime there's a pay correction or a problem with your payroll, you ought to be coming here right after you get your check. But this isn't what's been going on. So, I mean, we don't know what Kent or Paul was thinking. We know what you're thinking, and you want them to get it. Or you can use quetz time, if you wanna save money for the highway. But it has to be done correctly, so if they have a holiday in that week, or they take a sick time or a personal time, that's gonna cut down on their forty-hour week, so they haven't worked over forty hours. It's a, um, a warped situation. And if they haven't worked it, then they don't get it on any kind of overtime.
Which I know that's a state thing, but, of course, I don't agree with that anyway. But exactly, my feeling is, is that you earned that vacation time, so it shouldn't count against you to use it. And that, that's, that's, well, personally.
Have somebody else do the gate, in that week, if he's taking a vacation time, the other foreman can go in and do it. I mean, you, you've gotta work with the situation.
Yeah, so if he's gonna take a day off, have the other guy come in and do it. But underneath the policies that she just stated, you're stopped all, you had to get him in there and open up. But they still, the foremans are gonna come in and do the daily log, and see who's called in and who's not, and who's available.
And we, we usually get there about the same time, all of us, so.
That's just one other.
If I get there first, I, I unlock the gates.
Well, they were talking a while ago during the daily work assignments, so, I don't know, I'm just saying what they said.
Are you gonna push this out? And get it squared right in? Okay, like Steve said, if there's a roadblock somewhere, why would you bring it back to us? Anything else?
Oh, you gotta send that letter, then we just send to seventy-five?
Chip seal, how is it doing, or you?
Um, mayhem, we got started here, we're still doing the millings, trying to get.
We're getting spot millings?
Well, we're putting them down.
Putting them down, okay.
We're doing the log gym right now, but soon as we've had them, we'll be trying to do the millings. And then, once we get them down, then we can chip the seal on those and start the whole chipping seal process.
Okay, so for example, down at the county line road down there, where you're, are you putting millings down yet, or?
We, we're having down to do that, my only thing is, is it's up to you guys, my only thing is, they're still working on point six. So you got trucks going, running that, and I personally think that if we do it before then, before they're done, that they'll just tear it up. You guys want us to do it.
Yeah, we've had that same issue for the last two years.
But this time, the road, the video tapes, right, that's the road we're talking about?
Not eight hundred, that was six hundred.
Eight hundred? Are they running that section very much?
Um, their dumping station is only eight hundred.
Yeah.
The trucks that, uh, we're working on, we're working on point six, so they're running eight hundred, uh, to dump on, the spot they're dumping all of the heroin on.
Isn't that the road Clinton County's already closed? Our, remember the county line road at eight hundred, going east off seventy-five, they, Clinton County has put a sign up.
At the road.
That the road's closed to keep truck traffic off of it, which is what I thought we should've done on six hundred. They just put a barricade up, cars can still get around it, but semis can't, they're not gonna listen to our sign that says no trucks. They drive through barricades, so what's on you saying?
So you're suggesting on six hundred, we put up a barricade?
Yeah, that's what Clinton County has done at eight hundred, going east.
Just on their side.
Let's do that. So we don't get as many semis running that road, that's a nice road now, I don't want you to tour that.
Yeah. You got enough barricades to cover the county? Cause that's where we're coming to.
I know. I know.
Let's go out and get some of the state ones and put them out.
Grab theirs.
And they, they had a semi cross the Blue Bridge, bust through barricades. I don't know what kinda damage that, I gotta call it. Somebody saw a semi go through on seventy-five on the Blue Bridge.
That's the one?
The one that they're working on, yeah, the state's working on.
Semi just went down through there, went through it?
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, these people.
Just keep in mind, Mike, Mike has a barricade.
Oh, yeah, there's no idea. That's good. So, if, if Clinton County has blocked off some semis going down eight hundred, why, why do we have to wait on, on the chip sealing of that? If they're not letting them down through there?
Cause the highway trucks are dumping their, well, which are.
The re-trial, they just haul them from the twenty-six, or the place they've got to dump is on eight hundred.
Where is it though? Is it beyond what, is it where we've already got hard surface road?
Most of the ground, a lot of the ground, they come off seventy-five, I guess, and get down, get down through there. Last time it was down there, just on the outside of two hundred east, on the same spot or not.
Two hundred, yeah, but they're working way farther east now, you'd think, I mean, beyond that.
Yeah, I know, they're working on, once it's coming there, is working on about seventy-five to twenty-nine. Is the sections they're working on.
Somebody should go out there and monitor it and then report back to us, or at least report to Bill. And say, hey, there's not as much here on the way to or sign.
Yeah, take a look at it, I'll go down and take a look at it again, and see what's going on.
Go down and maybe test base, and see how much, is there gonna be home runs more, or how much longer?
They can tell you, you got work you need to perform, and we perform, and they tear it up, they're paying for it, and everything's just.
I would say that in a, one day, I spent about three hours at Adamsville Bridge, just sitting down there. We were running about forty-five cars. It was almost a car a minute, was what the traffic was across, except to that, that point. And during that time, I only had two trucks that I got out in the road and said, you turn around, go back. Now, I didn't stop any pickups.
Right, west of Oxford.
It was one-ton trucks above. But I know they were doing it, so you fixed that. So, let's look at the, at eight hundred down there, you know. People down there have been waiting a long time to get that one section fixed, but they might have to wait one more year, I guess. Okay, anything else coming for us?
No.
Okay, I think you're doing a great job, thank you.
I think if I could tell you the thanks, it's a learning experience for all of us.
Yep, yep.
Shane Evans, Shane out here? We always settle, I've never seen him here. Emily Almott, Cripsey. Emily, thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us again today. So, um, last month, Edwin Fuzzell and Sean Payne were here to present an opportunity for Carroll County to participate. And a grant opportunity for a region-wide Safe Roads for Streets grant opportunity that will put together a safety plan looking at all of the local roads within our region. So, since that meeting, I know, I believe, Phil, you weren't there at that. So, this opportunity, it, and I know you've kind of been working with, or a consultant, maybe, I don't know if a consultant had approached you or not, previously, but this, the safety plans, basically what they are looking at is eliminating or reducing those fatalities on your local roads and streets. Since we are a rural area, our whole region is rural, most of those fatalities within our area happen on those rural roads. Our goal is to eliminate those by really looking at the nitty-gritty of what are the safety issues on all of our local roads. So, we were approached, we got this NOFO, or a Notice of Funding Opportunity, to look at a region-wide study. Basically, where we would pull in all eight of our counties and be able to work with a consultant that will have to go through a procurement process on. And to submit this grant that would enable us to look at crash data, safety data, and be able to really put a plan together with implementable solutions and strategies to really help us get that number down to at least the bare minimum or zero, that is the ultimate goal. So, I know you received, I believe, two letters were submitted for your review. One is a local match letter. The amount that is on that letter, I believe, is twenty-five thousand and some, or twenty-three, twenty-three to twenty-five thousand. So, whatever the amount that is listed on that letter, you will not pay anything above that. That number is actually going, we anticipate decreasing, so your local match, that would be the maximum that you would have to contribute. As we are looking at this region-wide, we are going to all of our counties. If all of the counties participate, that number will be that number or decrease. If, you know, that would be your maximum. So, we, I know we've got at least half or more of our counties that will be participating in this. We are anticipating on a seven to eight hundred thousand dollar grant. If you were to do this independently, you, it would probably be around eighty thousand dollars typically is what this type of plan could cost you out of pocket, working on your own with a consultant. So, we met with Scott, and this, I believe this last week, to kind of go over why this is kind of important and necessary for Carroll County. Obviously, we have either all been impacted by a traffic fatality or have had knowledge of something of that in our area. And we have a way to really reduce that. So, we have an opportunity here within Carroll County. Obviously, the city has, and I've got Mayor Worling and JT here also, they are in favor of this. I don't know if you would like to share anything, or, you don't have to if you don't have a question. So, we see this as obviously something that will not only benefit residents, but it's going to be able to really look at those roads that are impacted.
Would it set up priorities for us?
So, it will essentially, it's going to look at those areas that have known fatalities and have known safety hazards. So, it's going to look at those intersections that have difficulty, whether that be for truck traffic or for pedestrian access or anything like that. So, it's going to be able to look at the individual local streets that sometimes we don't get to look at through an indot plan or something like that. So, this is going to be able to give a consultant kind of that hands-on approach to really look at that data and say, these are your top priorities that you need to focus on. Here are some strategies that we can really get to and make this a safer intersection or a safer roadway. And the city, obviously, you know, this is looking at county roads and your municipal roads. So, with the city being your largest municipality, obviously, they have a little bit more safety concerns. They have a little bit more truck traffic coming through. And that really is causing some serious implications for the residents and for just local traffic. Obviously, with all of, we all know, the construction and what that's meaning for us, and even post-construction, what that's going to mean. So, we just wanna make safe roadways. I know the mayor, if you want to say anything, or?
I just would add that because the city is interested in participating in the region of study, we'll certainly work out some type of cost sharing on that match with the county if you're interested in pursuing it. Frankly, even if the county were to decide that they don't wanna be in this, and I think most of the fatalities have occurred in the county rather than in the city. But our plan is to move forward and be part of that regional study. But I think the most cost-effective way for us to do that would be if the county is interested, that we work out a cost share, perhaps based on population or whatever formula seems appropriate. The city would certainly be, be happy to share in that match.
So, for example, if you have ten percent of the population of the county, you can make ten percent of the match?
Yes.
I would like to say that anything that can save you livelihood when, based on the roads, you might get. One case, you know, you've got ten thousand dollar deductible. And even if we're not at fault, you still have to pay that deductible. So, if you, if all down the accidents, you reduce one or two accidents, you're gonna be saving the county money in the bottom of the net, crisis, they will, certainly, if you do. And insurance costs are gonna be going up, I, I, I think, that's what I hear from Bob. You know, the defense costs are expensive, and we have a lot, a lot of points, so I think it's something, I think the money works better.
And I believe, yeah, so you have, so the two letters, and we just have to have these. One is the local match, and one is a, basically, it's a letter of support stating that you would essentially be participating. And we just have to have those signed by the July meeting, your first July meeting, I believe. Because this grant application does go in on July tenth. We won't hear anything, I believe, until third quarter at the earliest, so we're, it's a little bit of a lengthy process.
Okay, my question is, I, I think this is fine, but it's at twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Where do we have that? Where can we get it? I would think that'd be a good use for a head fund.
But I do have, I'm always the stick and the stone here, if we do this study, we find a section that's bad and we can't repair it. What's that gonna do? It just gives fuel to the fire, don't it, for your insurance?
No.
Would you like to do it?
No, a- as long as you're, no, identifying the risks.
Trying to identify.
Identifying and managing the risks is the name of the game.
On board, but I just, that was just my.
Love that too, we're building their case.
Yeah, we're building their case.
Well, and there's additional.
They know, they know, they have the same statistics.
Right, exactly, they have the same statistics. But the benefit of putting a plan together is when we meet with our indot regional offices, we have a plan that has, you know, these priority areas that you can take to them, and it shows that this is a priority, that that then can be put onto their five-year program list. There are additional, there is an implementation program, it is highly, highly competitive. But, I mean, there are means that, you know, it won't just sit. You know, obviously, we don't wanna ever just write a grant for a plan that's going to just be sitting. We wanna be able to see it receive action. So, there are definitely conversations and avenues to help you get things.
So, how does the motion need to work, that we endorse both letters with ten percent or whatever it is, contribute back from the city of Delphi? I mean, it's been fence floor and Camden. I don't think it's just one town that's ready to work.
What, what are you thinking for?
Oh, I, the target area, so I don't know what the target areas are, so I don't know how you break that as far as. That mileage to cover it up, and we got a county too, so that's a different scenario. The big floor, which is Delphi, some of our best bodies.
Well, I think the mayor has been very gracious in saying what they've built, I guess, wonderful. I don't know if we have time or anything to go to each community and say, this is your assessment, and put it back in. I don't, I don't know about that.
You wouldn't have to sign those today if you don't, if you're not comfortable signing today, I mean.